Thank you for being here this evening. We will commence the hearing on the Taxation, Finance, Economic Development Committee. I'm Councilman Carl Stokes, 12th District, Chair of this particular committee. To my immediate left is Council President Bernard C. Jack Young. To his left is Councilmember Eric Costello of the 11th Council District. I have also Councilman Pete Welch also. Maybe not yet. But Councilman I see, I mean, he's in the back, Councilman of the 8th District, who's our resident CPA, as I refer to him, who's also with us this afternoon. To my right is Ms. Jennifer Coats, who's staff to this committee. To her right is Kara Kuntz, who is from the President's Office and is the Legislative Liaison. We thank her for being a part of the session also. And there may be other members of the committee who are on their way down. We are telecasting live this evening, so this will air, currently is airing, on Channel 25, I guess, in Baltimore City cable, and will re-air at later dates, as well as it may be possible to download or downstream this particular session this evening. We're here this afternoon so that we can have an informational hearing regarding the Department of Recreation and Parks and the implementation of the recommendations contained in the Annual Financial Report slash Audit, as reported by the Baltimore City Auditor. So let me thank the Baltimore City Auditor and the Controller's Office, because it was in April of 2010 when I came back to the council. The Controller is here, I'm sorry, I didn't see the Controller. You were hiding back there. Not that you were hiding, I didn't see ya. But, sorry, I do, it was obviously Controller Joan Pratt. And we'll introduce others, Bob McCarthy and others, in a moment. But it was April 2014 when I came back and one of the first announcements of the then-new mayor said that we would be closing 15 recreation centers and seven or eight pools in the city. And I and others wondered why we were doing that. And we were told because there wasn't enough money, there would be a deficit. And we asked, "Well, how do we know that?" And they said, "Because we said so." And so, you know, being from the wrong school, I guess, I said, "Well, let's see those numbers." And no one had those numbers. And we asked for an audit. We didn't get an audit in 2010. We didn't get an audit in 2011, or 2012, or 2013. And in 2014, finally, we do have an audit before us. And so today's session is not about what we've done wrong, but what we have learned and what we will do going forward, so that we are stronger and more able to serve the constituencies. Again, I appreciate the Department of Finance, Mr. Raymond, for working with Bob McCarthy and the Controller's Office, the Department of Audits, as well as Mr. Burkine, who has come on board, who wasn't here four years ago, was not, and who I, this won't help you, sir, with anybody, who I think is doing a great job. So I guess I probably just damned you with praise. But seriously, I think that Mr. Burkine is doing a wonderful job in the short time he's been with us here. But we have had a number of challenges, shall I say, in trying to determine just what the books say and how. This is not, this is not merely in terms of Wreckin' Parks. Frankly, it could cover many of our departments across the city because of what has been our practice of, for the last 30 years or so, frankly. Having said all of that, again, tonight is a time to speak to what we have found out in this particular Annual Financial Report from year-end to June 30, 2012. There are some recommendations to Wreckin' Parks that have not, as I understand, been implemented yet, or maybe, what we'll find out tonight, just what has taken place. We also have with us tonight several advocates from the parks and wrecks community who will be also testifying here this evening. We have the co-chair of the Mayor's Transition Committee on Education, Wreckin' Parks, and Social Services, I believe. He will give the proper title, that is, Mr. Ralph Moore, who also will be here testifying. A former Parks Director, Chris Dellaport, will also testify this evening, as well as conversation and questions from members of the committee and others. Councilman Warren Branch is coming in to chamber. The Councilman represents the 13th District and is a member of this particular committee, Taxation, Finance, Economic Development. So, given that very short overview, we want to begin, let me mention that we have a sign-in sheet. And if you're interested, everyone, please sign in. And if you're interested in testifying, there is a box to the left of your name. If you would check off on that box that you wish to testify, that will alert me when I receive the sheet that you do wish to testify and that we will bring you forward. Let me mention that the recent Chair of the Baltimore City Recreation and Parks Board, which is an advisory group of volunteers and advocates of Baltimore City Recreation and Parks, is with us, Mr. Howard Alesworth. Mr. Alesworth, I know, has a pending appointment. And given that, I will extend a professional courtesy, other than asking any of my colleagues if they wish to say anything at this point, they can, if they would like at this point. If not, and immediately after if they do, I will ask Mr. Alesworth to bring forth his testimony, and then we will go to the agencies who are here with us. Any of my colleagues have anything before Mr. Alesworth? Thank you. Mr. Alesworth, if you would come forward, please, to the podium. If you have written testimony that you have copies of, we will take it. If you don't, you may simply begin your testimony.
Okay. Well, I am here as the President of the Wreckin' Park Advisory Board and wanted to say that I am really, I think that good things have happened with the current, I don't know what it is, it's the audit, but it's, you know, and the fact that this is the first of 13, that it, I hope that we've learned a lot from it.
Okay.
Specifically, what I think is important is that I think that the auditing side, in other words, the amount of money has come through and that it is placed efficiently. What I'm concerned about is, is that we don't really have then what was, where did the money go? And I think that we should look at that as an important aspect of the money and what the different groups within Wreckin' Parks, you know, are doing with that and that type of thing. And I think that that's really important. The thing that I want to really, you know, bring out is, is that these audit, this audit, and particularly for Wreckin' Parks, has a long life. This is not just something new that's happened. This has been going on for years and years and years. And I hope that we can develop the kind of working together so that we can actually get something that really means something and that is really efficient and really works. So as the, as the person on the Advisory Board, I have no, no power except to have people agree with what I say in terms of recommendations. And when I say "I," I don't mean me, I mean we, the board. So, but I think that, quite frankly, that Mr. Burkine has done a really good job in terms of starting this forward, and the fact that we are doing a national standard and working towards a national standard, that I believe that a lot of the "what" stuff is going to come up in that. So that's just my overall statement, and we will hopefully be working with you also. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Alesworth, I ask. By the way, let us thank you not only for serving now, but for the years and years that you've given the city, in terms of your volunteerism around the matters of parks and recreation, the streams, the ecosystem. I know you've been on the front lines of all of that for many years, and we thank you for the service that you're giving continually.
Well, thank you, and it's good working with you all, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any, yes, Councilman, Council President Jack Young.
Thank you. I just want to ask you, what are your thoughts? I knew at one time the park board had a lot of authority, a lot of power. Do you think that that's needed again?
Well, having not lived through when there was the board, I, as you're...
And the board actually got along with the director, because they hired the director.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, in terms of my working with Ernest at this point, I think that it's very flexible and it's really getting a lot done.
But my question is, do you think that that board need the power that it used to have?
I would like to see it have more power. I would like it not to be the power where it would be above where the director is. I think that having those two together is absolutely, you know, important.
Okay, 'cause prior to Mr. Burkine coming here, I was trying to get the board more power.
Yeah.
Because I feel a strong Recreation and Parks Board can go a long way in really helping Wreckin' Parks in their mission and their goals, to make sure that the department is fiscally sound and make sure that the projects that need to get done, need to get done.
Yeah, if I hear you correctly, and if I have heard you correctly, what you're saying is, is that the, is the park board and the park as a, as a department have to work together more closely, and that that's really what you're looking for?
Absolutely.
Is means to be able to make that happen.
Okay. We'll be looking at that.
Good. Well, I'll work with you.
Thank you, Mr. Alesworth. Any other comments or questions from Mr. Welch, Councilman Welch?
Just, just one. What authority does the board have in relationship to final approval of the budget?
Unless we do it as a recommendation, we have no say in that. So we could say that if you were to get X amount of money and use Y for this and Z for that, we could make a recommendation to that. But currently, the only power that we have is to make a recommendation, and if it is accepted by the director, then it is a, then it is accepted.
So there's no shared authority?
Not at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Again, Mr. Alesworth, thank you. We appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks. At this moment, actually, you know, we have the pleasure, well, pleasure, we have three councilmembers qualified to do audits. So we've got a great amount of expertise in the room right now, two of them are here, Councilman Pete Welch and Councilman Eric Costello. Gentlemen, if I would, I'm going to go to the agencies, and then if you'd like, just jump in at any, any point that you would like to. Is that all right?
That's fine.
Thank you. So, we've, we've read the report. Mr. McCarthy, is there any quick summary you want to give us this, this evening in regards to the report, or? It's up to you. We have read it, we're familiar with it, but I'm not sure if everyone in the room is, so, or the television. So for benefit of, of our audience, can you give us a quick summary of, if that's possible? Thank you. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Chairman Stokes, President Young, members of the committee. My name is Bob McCarthy, I'm the City Auditor. I would like to give a summary, but before I do that, I'd like to, Controller Pratt has asked me to read some portions of her letter that she submitted as a response to this bill. The letter was written as a response, but also written directly to Councilman Stokes, who's the Chair of the Committee, to put in the record. Is that, okay to start?
Sure, go ahead.
"I am writing to address your opinions expressed at the City Council meeting on Monday, November 10, 2014." I'm not, I'm just reading excerpts, but...
We're good.
"The following statements were made, which were simply not true, and are being responded to as follows. Number one, you stated that we want to hear, quote, 'we want to hear a report from the auditor.' What they did wasn't actually an audit. It's called an audit, but no respectable person outside of any government, city government particularly, would have signed off on what they did." And the Controller's response to that is, "The City Auditor, Deputy City Auditor, and the Lead Auditor of the Engagement met with you to go over the audit report and the related findings directly after the audit report was presented to the Board of Estimates on April 23, 2014. You did not ask questions about the audit or express any concerns at that time. If you needed additional clarification, the meeting offered the appropriate time and opportunity, rather than making unsupportable statements seven months later at a City Council meeting. The Board of Estimates noted the audit on April 23, 2014. It was an independent financial audit performed in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards that were issued by the Controller General of the United States." And they're called, it's called the Yellow Book. "Your statements reflect that you did not understand the requirements of a financial audit. As stated previously, it must be performed under generally accepted auditing standards. The audit opinion was based on the financial statements prepared by the Department of Finance and Department of Recreation and Parks, I'm sorry. The financial statements were supported by the city's financial records, which is City The adherence of the Department of Audits to auditing standards generally accepted in the United States and the standards applicable to the financial audits contained in the government auditing standards, and the quality of the Department of Audits' work has been reported in a Department of Audits' peer review. The work of the Department of Audits is required to be periodically reviewed, and has been determined with the current peer review that its internal control system was suitably designed and operating effectively to provide compliance with auditing standards. In other words, the body of the work of the Department of Audits fully complies with the requirements applicable not only to government entities like the Maryland Office of Legislative Audits, but also those of independent CPA firms that are governed by the AICPA, American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. Currently, the city's CAFER, which is a comprehensive annual financial report, is jointly audited by the Department of Audits and KPMG, who are a national independence, international independent CPA firm. Your characterization, your characterization of the City Auditor as not responsible, not a responsible person is not only objectionable, unfounded, and irresponsible, but it casts doubt on the integrity of the Department of Audits. Therefore, the declarations made cannot be condoned by my office. Number two, you stated that no payroll system per se, excuse me, quote, "There's no payroll systems per se, there are no financials. What we have is something un-auditable." The Controller's response to this is that that's, this statement is not correct. The Department of Recreation and Parks has the same payroll system that is used by the City Council and all other city departments, which is the city's E-time payroll system. The financial statements for the Department of Recreation and Parks were derived from and supported by City Dynamics, the city's financial accounting system. All departments, as they are audited, will need to use City Dynamics with assistance from the Department of Finance to generate their own financial statements. While there were findings as described in the auditor's report on internal control and financial reporting and on compliance and other matters on both payroll and financial statements, these findings are not causing modification of the auditor's opinion on the financial statements. Based on the audit, the financial statements present fairly the financial position of the Department of Recreation and Parks for fiscal year 2012. In other words, the Department of Recreation and Parks received a clean audit opinion. The Controller concluded, concluded the letter with, "I remain willing to meet with you to ensure that you are informed on the audit process. However, your inaccurate public statements should be retracted so that the public is properly informed, served openly, and with transparency."
You want to do it now or later?
Yes.
Why don't you, you know, I asked that you give a summary of your report.
I just want to get that effort.
That's what, that's what we asked for.
Yes.
So, that's fine.
Okay, we just want to get it into the record.
Okay.
So I can give a summary now?
Councilman Costello, please.
I want to preface this with, I'm very appreciative for the opportunity to have met with Mr. McCarthy and Ms. Gail Adams from the City Auditor prior to this, and thank you for a very frank and fruitful conversation. I'm relatively new on this job, eight weeks, two days and a half an hour, but I'm starting this with a clean slate and looking forward to working with you guys. I just wanted to address something in that letter. And while I can't speak for Chairman Stokes, I think there's probably some confusion related to a difference in terminology. In your letter dated April 9, 2014, you state that, "Accordingly, we do not express an opinion on the effectiveness of the Department of Wreckin' Parks' internal controls over financial reporting." And you go on to cite that the audit was conducted in compliance with GAGAS, Generally Accepted Government Accounting Standards, written by the GAO. And GAGAS requires a review of internal controls, specifically Section 2.07A. And reading from Yellow Book, GAGAS, "Financial statement audits, the primary purpose of a financial statement audit is to provide an opinion about whether an entity's financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in conformity with an applicable financial reporting framework. Reporting on financial statement audits performed in accordance with GAGAS also includes reports on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance with provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements that have a material effect on the financial statements." And just analogously dumbing this down for everyone, I think what that's saying is, we need to, the auditor needs to be reasonably assured that the spreadsheet that they're auditing wasn't created that day at lunchtime by someone. I think it's a way to, would you agree?
That would be true, yes.
Okay, so, I, I think the fact that you didn't issue, and I'm not blaming you, or, I think the fact that an opinion was not issued on the effectiveness of the internal controls may have been part of the impetus behind Chairman Stokes.
We issued two, two letters. One's the opinion on a financial statement, and the other is the audit report on internal controls and compliance with the financial reporting system.
Well, I'm just saying, I think where that comes from is your statement that, "Accordingly, we do not express an opinion." This is your letter.
Okay.
"Accordingly, we do not express an opinion on the effectiveness of the Department of Recreation and Parks' internal control over financial reporting." And I'm just shedding some light on where the confusion may have come from.
Okay.
Those are your, your word, the Controller's words.
They're my words, but...
But your, your words.
But, where, so the confusion's between the two letters?
We're interested in taking what you've done. And again, accepting the amount of time and effort and expertise that your office has done on this and building going forward. If you want to spend more time on this piece of it, God bless you. But we're interested in continuing to work with your office, which has done a very, very good job over these last four years in trying to get us to this point. Are we having some periods of dissatisfaction and frustration? But it doesn't kill it. It doesn't stop us. If you want to continue this line, that's, it's not where we want to go. So, you can make that decision.
Okay. I'll just...
We're working with you, the Department of Wreckin', and the Finance Department as we move forward to strengthen our financials and our policies, our procedures, going forward.
Okay.
We're appreciative of what has happened in these last four years. We're not, but, again, if you want to continue down this road, it will change the tone of the hearing. I don't think that that's why we're here. I know that's not why the Chair has called this hearing.
Okay, we have, I believe we have worked well with you over the years, too, and as with Finance and Wreckin' Parks. But could I address the Councilman's question now? The exact question, is the difference between the two reports, is that what you're having trouble with?
I think my question gets at the same thing that the Chairman is saying. We want to move forward instead of focusing on the past. Is that accurate, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And I think we want to talk about the recommendations that you issued to, the one to Finance and the five to Wreckin' Parks, and talk about what the status of implementing those, those recommendations is moving forward, and I think...
Okay. I'll be glad to sit down with you and explain both the reports, if that's what you like to do.
I would be more than happy to do that.
And then, of course, Councilman Stokes...
Sure. Let me mention that Councilman Bill Henry, Vice Chair of this committee, has also joined us. Councilman Henry represents the 4th Council District.
Yes, okay, okay. Okay. I'd like to explain in more detail on your question, okay?
Okay.
The, the letter that's included in the audit report is an opinion on the financial statements as presented by Wreckin' Parks slash Finance. We had a clean opinion. The financial statements presented fairly in accordance with applicable standards. The other letter, which I believe you're referring to, the first is the independent audit report, the second, if I can pull it up here for you?
It's dated April 9, 2014.
Both are dated April 9. Is air review, air report on internal control, the financial reporting system, and other matters. In that case, we viewed all the, we reviewed the systems, and that's where we found the problems with the payroll, the problems with the financial statements. We have five findings, I'm sorry, I can't remember them all off the top of my head. Payroll, financial statements, the procedures manual requested that be done. We had some issues with the revenues and the capital projects. And that's where, that is not part of the financial audit. That is part of the report as required in the Yellow Book.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And if, give a quick summary then of where we are?
Yes, sir.
As you know, we presented the audit through Wreckin' Parks to the Board. The Board requested that Recreation and Parks and Finance, because one of the findings affected Finance, report back to their, report back to the Board with the resolution of the five audit findings. There are two extensions created by the Board, and the department reported back to the Board of Estimates on November 5, 2014. Of the five findings, Finance had part of one, number one, and they resolved their portion. Recreation and Parks resolved their portion of their finding three, which is the payroll. And the remaining parts of the five findings, Wreckin' Parks stated they will be completed by December 31, 2014. Once that's completed, we will review what they've done and report our results to the Would you like details on the five findings, or?
It's crazy. I'm sorry, sir.
Would you like details on the five findings? Would you like details on the five findings? I'm not sure what you would like to hear. Everybody has this, but I...
I'm good. You know, the more you talk, the more disappointed I am, frankly. But you begin in that position when, when you're right that, yeah, when you're right that you don't even speak to the deficiencies in the internal control, and that you don't even try to give us any assurance that you're looking at these matters and being able to come forthright with the citizens of the city and the taxpayers of the city and letting us know where our dollars are, you know?
I'm sorry, let's know where...
It's truly insulting, and then to aggravate us with, and insult us, as if we're all fools, just as amazingly arrogant of the office, frankly.
On what? On the findings?
Okay, so, if you don't even understand what I'm saying...
You're saying that it's insulting, Councilman?
I can't hear you, ma'am.
You're saying it's insulting. We worked with you, you made allegations about Rec and Parks that were not true. These statements, when I spoke with you, you said you didn't say this. So we went back and we listened to the tape, and we have written it verbatim the way you said it. So, to say that this is insulting, you really owe the Department of Audits an apology, because they performed the audit in accordance with GAGAS, they issued an opinion, and you're saying that no, you're saying that we were insulting. You're saying here that what they did actually wasn't an audit. It was an audit. And then you said, "It's called an audit, but no respectable person outside any government, city government particularly, would have signed off on what they did." How can you make a statement like that? And we've worked with you continuously throughout the years. It took a while because we had to get information from the Department of Rec and Parks. So for you to say that it's insulting, it's insulting to my department for the work that they performed. And I really think that you owe the Department of Audits an apology for making these statements which are not true. And I spoke with you and I said to you, "Do you really understand what an audit?" And you said, "Maybe it's an audit, maybe it's a review, I don't know." So for you to say that it's insulting, it's very insulting to the Department of Audits.
We've been joined by Councilman Jim Kraft of the 1st Council District. Any other comments from the committee? It's just not even a matter that we're, actually, we think that you're the vision, has done a great job. I've said that 14 times here this evening over the last four years. We think they have. The fact that there is a broken system, or has been a broken system, is the matter here. The matter is not that the auditors did a bad job. There was very little that they could do, given the condition of the financials and the broken system that was there.
That's not true.
Sir, yes. Mr. Henry, Mr. Raymond.
Yeah, you can leave your stuff there. Good evening, I'm Henry Raymond, Finance Director for the City of Baltimore. I have to take exception to the comment that you just made. The financial systems of the city are not broken. The financial systems of the city are in place and they are working well. The Department of Audits has just stated that they performed a financial audit, the agency received a clean bill of health. The financial records of the system are available. The CAFER's issued...
Of the Recreation and Parks...
Excuse me, one moment, let me finish. The financials are prepared every year through the CAFER process. Every year, the city receives an unqualified opinion. To publicly state for the public that the financial system of the city is broken is incorrect, and I have to address it. We are safeguarding the city's assets, the revenues, all of the financial transactions for all city agencies are readily available, and we need to understand that. And to suggest otherwise is a disservice to the city, because we cannot have people thinking that the city has no financial system. And more importantly, let's look at what this audit did. There were no findings of fraud, there were no findings of misappropriation, there were no findings of any illegal actions at all. Now, it's been said here tonight, there's money missing. There's no money missing. The audit did not detect that. There were no material findings of waste, fraud, and abuse. Now, there were findings with the internal controls. The Finance Department, the mayor, and the administration are supportive of those findings, because those findings will result in improved efficiency and effectiveness in our operations. But we cannot say that the system's broken and that the Department of Audits did the best they could with what they had to work with, which was nothing. That's, that is just not correct.
Okay, we didn't say anything. And why did it take four years, sir?
I don't have all the history of that. The point is this, the audit was done, it was presented, you have the findings, there was no fraud, no illegal acts were found, it was a clean opinion. What does this say? As it relates to Rec and Parks, they run a good operation, no incidents of fraud, waste, or abuse.
Okay, and we said that?
The audit report says that.
I said, "Did we say that?"
You, a moment ago, said that auditors did the best they could, and they weren't working with anything because the financial system's broken. I immediately challenged that, because the system is not broken.
Okay, and so Rec and Parks had all the financials that they needed to have to do this audit?
Yes.
Okay.
And always have. Now, and let's be...
Okay, that's not what you said.
When?
Okay.
No, let's be clear.
You're right, we'll pull this out, sir.
We have always had financials.
I got you. I know that Andrew Klein made a statement. Go ahead.
No, I'm saying, we're not going to go back and forth, having an argument of, you know, situation here, for the public to be watching us, who's supposed to be looking out for their best interest. I mean, we can disagree without being disagreeable, and the tone, I don't like.
No, understood. At the same time, the public needs to clearly understand that the city's financials are safeguarded, there is a system, and to portray it otherwise is inappropriate.
Okay, we, 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 we'll, okay, we do disagree that the Rec and Parks' financials were in good order. We asked for an audit four years ago, and we were given reasons why we don't have it until now.
If I can help with the situation, when Councilman Stokes first talked about doing an audit, we were told, I don't know if it was Andy Klein or who, that they had no records. And they had to go and look and find information for an audit to take place. Now, I knew that was said, because I was here. And listening to you all say that Chairman Stokes didn't ask for the audit four years ago, he asked four years ago. And I can tell you about some things that I asked for, that I still haven't gotten, when I asked for audits. So, let's all be clear. We can disagree. We don't have to raise our voices, we don't have to, you know, overtalk each other. We can have a good dialogue and disagree. That's all I'm asking.
So, thank you. Let's talk, please, if we could, about the recommendations that were made, and at what point there has been a response, and at what point we should look for the implementation of the recommendations, and how that helps us build going forward.
Rec and Parks, we have the status of that, but I can give you, all I know is it's going to be done by 12:31.
Say again? What about... I'm sorry, now? Okay. I'm going to ask Councilman Kraft, who has joined us, if there was a comment or a question he wanted to make before we move forward. Thank you.
Right.
Unfortunately, I didn't bring it down with me, because I didn't know that I would need it. But, when Mr. Gallagher was here, and so I'm going back a couple of years, we did have a situation with the Dewburns Arena, where we could not find where the rents had been paid. We were trying to ascertain how much rent was owed, and how much rents had been collected, and this was with the whole thing with the prior tenant, trying to ascertain when we were renegotiating whether to extend the prior lease, because we had gone into effectively a month-to-month, and then we had an agreement to go for a year at Dewburns. But when we went to try to find those records, no one could find them. I mean, they weren't in the Department of Finance, they weren't in the Department of Recreation and Parks, and I actually have correspondence in my files regarding this. And this was when we were changing Rec and Parks directors like every 18 months or so, but, you know, and no one ever tracked that down, and I think that was one of the reasons when we were calling for this audit, you know, two, three, four, five years ago, when these calls first started for the audit, that was one of the things we were talking about at the time. So, you know, I don't know, when I asked for the audit back then, that was one of the things I was concerned about, was, you know, where was that bookkeeping, what had happened to things like that? So, you know, I can see this, this report, and I haven't read it in detail, I skimmed it, so I can see that and say, "Okay, look, we looked at a financial statement at a point in time, and said, 'Okay, at this point in time, analyzing this financial statement, this is what we find.'" But if we look at the historic period from this point in time to this point in time, and we do an historic analysis for whatever those number of years are, pick a timeframe, 2009 to 2014, you know, are all those records there? Is everything intact from that time period? Can we, in fact, and I'm not saying anybody, and I'm not alleging or not representing or trying to say anybody did anything wrong. What I'm saying is, you know, do we have the records? Were they misplaced? Did, you know, was it an accounting mistake, or was it just sloppy bookkeeping at the time within the agency that caused problems for us, something such that they need to be addressed so they do not occur again? That's, that's my concern.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Burkine if he would speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, Councilmembers. We look forward to the audit, and we think it's an important part of our operation. The idea is to tell us what we're doing wrong, so we can then correct it, so that we, in fact, can be more efficient. And we did work with the Department Audit, and we concur with the findings that took place, and we have been working to make those improvements. That first finding, which was a combination of Finance and Department, the recommendation for the Department was to provide, to develop a manual to guide the accounting staff. And we've completed that manual, and we will turn that into, we will, in fact, meet with the Audit Department before the end of December. The second finding, which was about payroll documentation, we've taken action to correct that by meeting with staff, going through the procedures. And we think that a better operation than paper would be an electronic system. We can't afford that at this point in time, but we have, in fact, made that a part of our budget request, so that we won't always have those same problems with paper. You know, if you've got human beings, they're going to make those mistakes. Electronic would be a much better and much more efficient way to go, and hopefully, if the Finance Department smiles on me, I can get a couple more dollars to get that done. We have finished finding number three, which was a procedure manual, and in fact, that will be a part of what we turn into the Audit Department. The finding number four was about revenues. The chart of accounts had been reviewed by accounting staff and corrected where necessary. And, and we are in the process of completing that manual procedures, which will be done in another week or so. The last finding was about capital projects, and the problem there, of course, is that the Capital Division staff was not in its full complement during the time of this particular fiscal issue. A new staff member has been placed within the unit and has the responsibility of providing fiscal oversight to project expenditures and the related record management. Additionally, the Department, through its fiscal service unit, will ensure that the overall fiscal accountability is uniformly maintained.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Did that answer?
It, I understand, Mr. Burkine, and you are at the distinct disadvantage of not having been here during that time, and I understand that these are moving forward, and I think they're the things that we need moving forward. I don't know how, I don't know how or whether we can go back and try to find those things out, determine what happened, or whether we can determine what happened back then. And if we can't, then I think we just ought to say, "Okay, look, we chalk it up to experience, we didn't have the systems, they weren't into effect, in effect, and it is what it is, and we move forward and it won't happen again in the future." But I think in some way, it has to be addressed and acknowledged, that's all.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question from Mr. McCarty.
I got you.
You have a system of internal control which was addressed in your internal audit of the city of Rec and Parks. Will this be revisited again when your external auditors come in to opine on the city as a whole?
They are, they are aware of the findings we found for Rec and Parks.
Okay.
They have incorporated that into their fiscal year 14 audit with us, and nothing has come about yet. Nothing has come out. It's, they're aware of it, and it's been part of, it's been incorporated into our testing.
So, the recommendations, as well as the remedies, will be looked at by the external auditors? And barring no exceptions, you accept, I guess you expect no exceptions from your external auditors regarding the controls?
Controls, as it relates to Rec and Parks?
Yes.
At this point, no. Still in process.
So what we should see is a mirror of your audit report by the external auditors when they issue their report?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
If you're reporting that internal controls are as they are, then we should expect a similar report from the external auditors when they look at Rec and Parks. Is that correct?
And, no, the CAFER is on a citywide basis, it wouldn't be, meet the materiality levels as the individual department would.
I understand that most selections are done randomly, but given the attention that Rec and Parks has been given, would the auditors take a look at the controls, given the notoriety?
The samples, this, this art report is factored into all the risk factors when we do the samples.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, Mr. Costello, Mr. Burkine.
Mr. Burkine, thanks a lot for meeting with me a couple of weeks ago, I really appreciate it. Had a nice discussion about this and a number of other things going on with Rec and Parks. First question is on audit finding number two. Payrolls are currently being reorganized to ensure that employees are charged to the correct payroll account. For the direct supervisors to see and approve an ADP, anticipated completion date for this process is December 31st, 2014. I... I heard a status update for payroll documentation for finding two, but could you address that specific one? Is that still in process, or is that completed?
The ADP project is just on hold.
What's the matter? That's the electronic system.
The electronic system. The electronic system is on hold right now.
So there's nothing that's being done in terms of policies and procedures?
No, no, we've done the policies and procedures. We've completed that. What we have not done is employ the ADP because we do not have the money to purchase the system.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And then on finding number four, accounting for revenues and the whole situation with the discrepancy between the $400,000 and the $600,000 codes. I think in your response, it looks like actions have been taken to rectify that. Staff have been updated on that, folks have been trained, all that is obviously a good thing. Is that something that's documented in any of the policies and procedures that were updated as a result of the other findings?
It will be a part of that cash handling process, yes.
So that's been done, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm good, Mr. Chair, thank you.
You're good? Thank you. I'm gonna ask Mr. Ralph Moore to come to testify before the committee, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, members of the council.
Good evening, sir.
Almost five years ago, I co-chaired with Muriel Berkeley the Education Reform and Youth Services Committee of incoming Mayor Stephanie Rawlings Blake's transition team. It was my honor and pleasure to serve in that capacity with a great group of committee members comprised of two university presidents, the head of the teachers' union, the dean of Maryland's Law School, the then-head of the Family League, and notable names such as Sally Michael, Pat Welch, Anna Williams, and Reverend Douglas Miles of Cornelia Baptist Church, and Bill, among others. It was an impressive group that met in the thick of the blizzard, actually, there were two blizzards, raised questions, discussed and debated ideas, and sought answers to our questions. If you read our March 19, 2010, report released by the members of our committee, you'd see we were just a portion of the 150 members of the mayor's transition team. That group was divided into four committees. Also, you would see the very basis of our concern, particularly regarding the Department of Recreation and Parks. It is all about giving our youngest citizens, our children, the quality recreational programs, activities, and facilities they deserve. When we wrote our report to the mayor, we expressed concern about the operations of the city recreation department. We questioned the lack of responsiveness, openness, and suitability of the department's leadership. We were surprised when we were stonewalled in response to our request for information from department leaders. We were frustrated to hear of limited to absent accountability with the fiscal affairs of the department. We were stultified in 2010 to be treated not as a committee appointed by the mayor, but as opponents from out of left field. Questions were asked then of the Department of Recreation and Parks, questions we asked then of the Department of Recreation and Parks have yet to be answered, if they were in fact acknowledged. Now, some five years later, they still haven't been answered. Information we sought was never supplied. Either Charles Dickens or Mark Twain once said, "Trust everybody, but cut the cards." Our committee asked for an audit of the fiscal affairs of the Department of Wreckin' Parks. We understood that there not to have been an audit in decades. We also requested some detailed information about the department's capital budget. We are still waiting for those answers. We did not raise questions as an academic exercise. Some of us felt things were askew in the department based on our experiences with it. For example, in my capacity as then-director of the St. Francis Academy Community Center, the children and staff of our summer camp were frustrated by the threat of closing each year of the walk-to swimming pool in East Baltimore's Johnson Square neighborhood, the Ambrose Kennedy Pool. We were led to believe the department's budget was tight and cuts had to be made, so the children in one of the poorest neighborhoods in Baltimore were to lose recreation services because they couldn't be afforded by city government. We fought the cut each year with children and their parents attending taxpayers' nights at the War Memorial Building, as well as with their letters to two different mayors, some media appearances, and a demonstration or two. One occasion was a sit-in by the children in the offices of the then-director of Recreation and Parks. We wouldn't do that to you, of course, unless we had to. We won each year, but not without fight. In the course of our evaluation of the Department of Recreation and Parks, we realized things were not straight in the department. For example, some things were continually being built with the capital portion of the budget, while facilities and services were being shut down or limited in the operating hours by way of the same department's operational budget. We realized something was not right. Our concern was supported by the resistance of the department to answering our questions. Supreme Court Justice Louis Brandeis once said, "Sunlight is the best disinfectant." He meant openness keeps things clean and honest. With all due respect to all the decent, hard-working employees of the recreation department, and my father worked for the recreation department, Ralph Moore, Sr., for 40 years, there is something rotten in the department. Something doesn't smell right. Something smells like dirty laundry. It appears we finally got an audit of the Recreation and Parks Department, but like the sleight of hand, a common magic trick, our attention to finally getting an audit is designed to divert our attention from the questions of what happened to the department's spending of the previous 40 years. What are the details of what became of both operational and capital spending for the past four decades? How do we know the downsizing and center closings we've experienced over the amount of time it took the Israelites to wander in the desert were justified? How do we know our tax dollars were not lost, stolen, or strayed to the wrong place? How do we know we did the best we could with the dollars we had? We don't. We need an accounting of the past decades of spending our tax dollars by the Recreation and Parks Department. We're only getting a portion of the story. We need the truth and the whole truth. It will set us free and on the road to becoming a far better Recreation and Parks Department in a city on the rise. Our children, first among our citizens, deserve the best recs department we can give them. The Chinese say, "The best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago. The second-best time is today." We can be better by handling business in Baltimore as if we care about our children's future and we care about them now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any comments or questions for Mr. Moore? Right.
I'm excused.
I got it. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your service, and it was a good five years, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, it was. Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, members of the council, Director Raymond, Director Burkine, Comptroller, friends one and all. I've listened very carefully, and I've got a lot of, I've got a lot of documents in that white folder. Councilmembers all have the white folder. You have it, you see a statement here, this lilac-colored, which is the statement, and I'm not gonna read it, I'm gonna sort of highlight it so we can compress our time. You see a blue sheet that says Philadelphia Parks and Recreation. You see a article called, from the New York Times, called "The Billionaire's Park," and then you see a very important document, the Commission on Accreditation of Park Management. So I'd like to start on a positive note, but a candid one to the, I'd like to start on a positive note to the comptroller and to the auditor, and paraphrase what I say about the audit. This is my personal opinion. It took way too long to get the obvious. I have the Philadelphia Recreation and Parks audit, and every agency that I've been involved with always has problems with the receivables, with cash, with closing out POs, with internal procedures with respect to controlling, if you will, the finances of the agency. Item number six, the capital program, was discovered, in fact, by the transition committee. We were the ones that said that the department keeps two sets of books. I'm the one that said all along that every single penny in the department needs to be under the control of the director, every single penny. So I was hoping that we would get something different. I want to be honest about this. And what I was hoping for was that we would be getting, we would be getting a little bit something what was touched on by, what was touched on by Ralph, and that is what I call the fund applications. Where does the money go? Where does it end up? What are the percentages and so forth? So I want to be fair with the comptroller and say just exactly what my opinion was on it, and it's expressed in this document. Those are the three things I thought. Took too long to get the obvious, and, you know, I just felt like that we needed more, but let's go forward. After all, this is a horse that hadn't been ridden, apparently, for 40 years. So I think all of us could take some ease and realize that on the second go-around, we'll do better. I hope so. And that's what I'm pointed to. Now, I'd like you to take the document that's right here, that is the New York Times piece, and I've marked it for you. If you'll turn the page to the second page, and I want to read this to everyone in here, and then I want to comment on it. "The design, placement, and maintenance of parks were once a function of a democratic process. Now, as a citizen, you feel like a spectator to largely privatized decision-making. A declining public sector, burdened by budget cuts, creates a vacuum for imaginative civic leadership that is being filled by a new class of amenities. Things are going to get a lot worse, too. Non-defense discretionary federal spending will fall to its lowest level in modern history by 2017, leaving the Washington, Washington less able to finance projects." This is what's happening in our country, and it's happened here. So what has happened since I was director in the 80s? Robert E. Lee is gone.
Delapoy, I gotta ask you to stay as close to the microphone as possible.
Robert E. Lee is gone. We gave it to the county. Fort Smallwood is gone. We gave it to the county. The Downtown Partnership maintains the parks downtown. Parks and People is building parks. So is Johns Hopkins. Memorial Stadium is gone. The Inner Harbor is gone. The whole legacy is tarnished by the fact that it's been diminished by private development in the city. And good, I had a part in this. I was telling Councilman Costello, the zoo is gone, the golf courses are gone, and I didn't know any better. But what happened as we privatized these, or chose a different way to create these satellites, if you will, was that everyone who had an interest in those respective things, the zoo, the golf courses, the new stadium and so forth, they all went that way. And what we're left with is a park system in tatters, underfunded by millions of dollars, millions of dollars. Mr. Bulcom is here today. When he worked, when he and I worked together, there were 125 people, 125 people in the Forestry Division authorized, boots on the ground. Now there are 20. Now, we have contracted, I understand that. But you see, the type of information that I was hoping to get, Mr. Raymond, would break these things out so we could see the fund application and begin to look at how much of it we've contracted out, how much of it remains in the public sector, but we don't have that information. It's not clear to us. That's management information. So let's take the general category of maintenance, and suppose that I suggested in year two to the comptroller and to the auditor, a good thing to do, one of the things you could do is to take five or six major categories inside the budget and report on the breakout of the fund application inside that. For example, maintenance. Where does the money, the nearly $9 million, go? How much to equipment? How much to repairs, general maintenance, life cycle maintenance, expendables, supplies? You know, how does that work? Without that information, the council can't have a discussion among itself to even accept the fact that this department is so grossly underfunded and understaffed. If you don't have the information, you can't have the conversation. That was the point of the audit for me. So if you look down through my statement, and by the way, the fiscal affairs director, Mr. Harris, should be commended, and he needs help. I make a point of that. I hope the council will look at all the fiscal affairs directors, no doubt for every agency, because it's true. Mr. Klein did say that in effect the departments could not, did not have the expertise to prepare the financials. He did say that. So if you look inside this document, you'll see the major budget categories for the department at this time. They're all broken out here except for therapeutic recreation and senior citizens. I've listed them here. May I respectfully suggest to the comptroller and to the auditor, and perhaps to the director, that you try to go inside these numbers and audit them so that the council and the mayor can see how the money's spent, how that actually is applied. It would be a good thing, because we could then start to have a different discussion instead of bumping up against each other, which I was telling Calvin before I spoke, is really the hardest thing about, you know, doing public advocacy, is you're always bumping up against someone in this town without any facts. I don't know any more than anyone else knows in here. For example, when Mayor Smoke was the mayor, somehow it was decided that the Golf Corporation would give the department $400,000 a year, which they do. The golfers pay into the department $400,000. I'm sure all of you would be interested to know what happened to the money, what the application has been. I know the golfers probably would. And then I went out to visit with the Golf Corporation director, and I said, "How about that? All these years, probably about $12 million of money that could have been applied to the golf operation." And he said, "Well, you know, Mr. Raymond's predecessor told us we didn't have to give 400 this year, we could give only 300." Well, how was that decision made? How do these things happen? That's where we need to go to try to understand the way the finances of the department works. I mentioned forestry, I mentioned maintenance. That's two examples where we could go. Let me talk a little bit about forestry. It's a, it's a, it's just something I like to talk to you about. Let's suppose today that you knew, as a matter of fact, what the backlog was in tree trimming, dead tree takedown, and stump removal. I'm assuming all of you get calls on those issues. We have an absolutely diminished forestry division, yet the Sun Paper runs an editorial talking about the green canopy and how we're gonna go forward. I say in here, "We don't know anything about what we're doing. Should we be planting trees or maintaining the trees we have?" Because trees die if they're not properly maintained. And even more importantly, what if we audited all the trees that we planted and see if they get watered for five years? Because trees don't live unless they have five years of water generally after they're planted. We'd have none of that information. Now, someone told me, and I have to be like everyone else in here, just say, "This is what I heard." I've heard the stump removal backlog is so deep and so long that it just kind of has to be ignored. I don't know if that's true or not. Maybe the director can comment on it. But what if you just, as a council, worked with the director and with the auditor to try to understand what has happened to a forestry division in a city that owns its trees? Baltimore owns the trees. Baltimore owns the trees on the street. So, where does the money go? I want to talk a little bit, just finally, about capital improvements, because it's a kind of an area of mine that I've always been interested in, the financing. I was talking to Councilman Costello about this whole business of how we spend money. You know, three years ago, I went to Deputy Mayor to try to explain that open space money could be used for operation and maintenance. We're the only jurisdiction in the state that can do that. We can use our open space money for that. And he said, "Is that right?" You know, a distinguished member of our delegation asked me to talk to her about that, and she said, "Well, I didn't know that." So you had a separate set of books kept, and what happened over time is all that money was kind of kept together, and as you changed directors, the directors never really understood this fact. And what did we have four or five years ago? We had the Mayor of this city saying we didn't have the money to operate the swimming pools. We had the money. Believe me, we had it. So if we look at fund application as you go forward, the Director will then have a document that he can bring into the room and say, "We're spending money like this. We're spending money like this. We're falling short," whether it's stumps or playgrounds and so forth. I mean, think about this, ladies and gentlemen, in a city that counts everything in City Stat except the money. Isn't that curious? If you look at City Stat, you find out how many people went swimming, but you don't know what the cost is. You don't know the unit cost. I'll close with one story. I've always believed in this profession, that recreation in this city was a life-saving business. That's what I believe, when it comes to kids. I believe that if you stimulate the mind, accelerate the heart of a child, like Graham Greene says in "The Power and the Glory," "There's always one moment in a child's life when the door opens." That's what I believe, and they'll walk through it. We had a little track program. Some of you may remember Mr. Durant. How many remember Mr. Durant? The President does. I mean, Mr. Durant taught me. So what I'm going to tell you, he taught me. At the end of Mr. Durant's life, we had a track meet at Morgan, and we had the pen relay timer there and the pen relay people there, looking at our track kids. We had five hundred kids, when I was Director, in track. We weren't running here. We'd been no further than Hershey, Pennsylvania. We ran in Madison Square Garden. We ran in the Coliseum. At the end of the period of time, we chartered two 727s, flew all of these kids to Baton Rouge, rented a dorm, and ran down there. I wish you could have been in New York when you watched our kids show up against the Baltimore County kids at Madison Square Garden. They knew that their clock was going to be cleaned, and it was. The cost per unit, per training for a forty-five-minute period was like this. You had to stay off drugs, not be taken downtown, mind your parents, and stay in school. Cost you twenty-five dollars. You went for forty-five minutes. You could run against the clock. You could run against someone else. You could run against a record. It costs ninety-eight cents per unit of time to do all of what I've just described. I think you know where I stand. We got to give this man, this man has been Director of three cities. He needs a lot of support. I'm sorry. This is what I would suggest to the Auditor, for a performance audit, I mentioned this to Eric. These are the standards that he's trying to see us meet, right here in this green paper. You look through here.
Back to the microphone, sir.
Look at number five. All of us, please look at number five. Here you go, Mr. Raymond. Number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If you look at number five, just look at five, and see the hill he's got to climb in financial management. You see that?
No, you don't.
Number five. Look how long it goes. Agency accepted, gift and donations, grant procedures. Run right on down it. This is a big job here. Mr. Harris can't do this by himself. Accreditation's not going to happen with a staff of one or two or one and a half over there. You're going to have to give him more help. You have to give him more money. So I challenge my friends in the Council to see if you can get rid of the stump backlog.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have three Council members who wish to speak. You're going to give that to, thank you. Councilman Branch, followed by Councilman Costello.
Thank you.
And Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to reflect on something that Mr. Davenport stated, and I would like to ask Director Burkine of these concerns and issues I actually saw. These situations I actually saw before he was there, so I can understand what Mr. Davenport is saying. It appears that he's sort of held hostage. He come into a situation where he's held hostage and don't have the resources to help him out. But I just wanted to ask you one, the park maintenance. I see the output of the parks. You have a hundred and twenty-eight. Does that include Bochex and Collington Square? Bochex Park and Collington Square?
Okay, I didn't hear the first part of your question.
I was just, I was looking at the park maintenance, and it stayed, I mean, output, you have output, a hundred and twenty-eight. Does those hundred and twenty-eight include the two Bochex and Collington Square as far as park maintenance?
You're talking about the employees?
Yeah, well, I don't know whether it's the employees. I'm assuming it's the number of parks. Am I correct? Would I be correct? On page eighteen of the, inside the, the actual bill, it's tough for the audit. You have a list, you have a, it's, there's a breakdown of each of the Baltimore Department of Recreation and Parks. I'm assuming.
Councilman, did you say you want to come back? Are you okay? You have it?
Yeah, yeah, I have it. I was just hoping that everybody else have it.
Mr. Burkine, do you have the same document?
Yes, I think Councilman Costello just gave it to me.
In the second section, you have.
Well, under park maintenance.
Yeah, under park maintenance, right. You have.
And you're talking about number of playgrounds maintained, a hundred and twenty-eight.
Right. Would that include Collington Square and?
Collington Square, yes. Collington Square, yes.
Collington Square.
And Bochex as a playground, yes. The playground piece, yes.
How many? It doesn't indicate how many employees you have working for park maintenance. Mr. Davenport sort of raised an issue on that.
How many? Eighty-one. It's eighty-one park maintenance.
Eight and one?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Because I was just, I thought it was because of the downsides of the employees. But I've noticed that the park maintenance that's being done now, it's not manicured like it was years ago. And when I stayed there, I mean, you can walk by these parks now. Let me use Bochex for an example. On the outlining of it, you have rat holes everywhere. It's not edged. In the, during the seventies and eighties, they would edge, after they cut the grass, they would edge around it. And I mean, what I'm stating to you is not only done in, it's not being done only in recreation parks, but I see it in transportation when they do the road sides, and many of the other divisions that deal with maintaining the grass in the city. And it gives a terrible outlook on the city of Baltimore. I don't know whether it's being rushed because you don't, you have lack of manpower, or is it being rushed because they're trying to just do it and go to the next? I don't know. I think that's something missing within Recreation and Parks. So I was, I was assuming that when I looked at the numbers, that it was because of the audit, you have, you may have lost people. Could that be the?
We've lost?
At one time, how many? I mean, you probably wouldn't even know because you wasn't here. See, I don't know, I mean, what was the actual number of employees, probably before the, I mean, during the Dixon Administration? We don't know whether, I mean, I don't know how many cuts from the O'Malley to the Dixon Administration, and now, which may affect the Rollins Administration. I mean, I think you've been, I mean, you're coming to a situation where they, they want you to be a magician and make things happen. And I don't think that you can do it without the resources. It looks like your agency is the agency where they go to, to pull millions of dollars from. Where I sort of agree with the Council President, they should have been linked together with the Police Department, and you all should have given some of those resources from there. I think, I mean, I agree with the Council President, Recreation and Parks and Public Safety should go hand in glove. So, I don't know. Will it, will there be, will that be something that's looked into? Because it does affect each year, I mean, I started with the city of Baltimore twenty, thirty years ago. Former Mayor Clarence DeBrons helped me get that position. And when I started at Montebello Filtration Plant, it was mandatory that not only do we cut the grass, that we maintain it. I mean, because they wanted to give the impression to anybody that comes up that hill and road corridor, you know, "Hey, look at this community. This is a, this is a community worth living in." And as I go across the city, and especially in the district that I represent, it looked like you have somebody just go and just run a mower over it, and then they leave. They don't care about it. Grass is left everywhere. Bags is left everywhere. I don't know whether it's because of the agency, the supervision, the cost. I'm assuming cost must have some form of effect to it. But it certainly don't make our city look good. And then when you're talking about the areas of the inner city, and there not being maintenance properly, it, I guess you would have people talking about trying to move out, and you're trying to move people out, and then you want to move ten thousand families in. What are you moving ten thousand families in to? I don't know. Also heard the Mayor talk about moving in more Hispanic people into the city of Baltimore with low-income costs. What is she moving them in to? Who is she moving out? Who is she moving in? What are they moving into? I hope you were following me in what I was saying.
Yes.
And, okay, I don't know if you, I don't know if you can actually give me an answer to that.
No, you talked about the grass.
Before your watch, even though now, I mean, you're handed with the, you know, the ball has been handed to you to move and do something with, but you're not given that much resource in order to do what you can. And I can imagine if you, you're probably making promises to all fourteen councilmatic districts, because everybody is pulling you. So who get the, who get the resources? That's, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Costello?
My question, very brief, it's a three-part question for the whole party. And before I begin, Mr. Raymond, I didn't get an opportunity to thank you for having a very nice discussion with me and Deputy Mayor Smolian on this issue in the context of the larger issue with regard to the Quadrennial Audits Bill and the Charter Amendment. And this question is geared towards that, in the spirit of what Mr. McCarty and I just discussed at the beginning, or, and during our meeting, of working together to try and improve things, so not focusing on the negative, but looking forward and how do we do better, you know, moving forward for everyone's benefit. So the first part of that question is, there was a, it looks like the audit report was released on April nine, two thousand and fourteen, correct?
Twenty-third of August, yes.
Okay, April. And it looks like the letter from Finance and BCRP was in November of two thousand and fourteen. And again, not knocking the seven-month period, just want to get the facts out. Can you explain the reason for the seven-month response to come up with the corrective act of the cap, the corrective action plan to address the five recommendations?
Essentially, that's the amount of time that it took to prepare the Procedures Manual for preparing the financial statements, and it represents the amount of time for the agency to craft the, implement the corrective action plan to address the findings.
Got it. Thank you. And this question, well, this comment and question is more geared towards Mr. McCarty. In the federal government, federal agencies that have fifteen, twenty times the budget of the entire city of Baltimore are able to put together a corrective action plan within sixty days. Thirty-one USC 720 requires a sixty-day response to audits by the Government Accountability Office. Mr. McCarty, in your extensive experience of nearly thirty years as an auditor, is a sixty-day period something that you feel is a reasonable amount of time to merely come up with the corrective action plan, not necessarily implement the recommendations? And Mr. Raymond and Mr. Burkine, very appreciative, because I know that while you guys were coming up with that corrective action plan, you guys were actually doing the work to fix the problems. But I'm merely asking with regard to just creating the corrective action plan, like, "Hey, we're going to update these policies and procedures," or, "Hey, we're going, we're going to do X, Y, and Z to address Mr. McCarty, Mr. McCarty's recommendations." Is sixty days a reasonable period of time?
In general, sixty to ninety days is.
Okay.
And? And that's not to get, not to resolve all the issues, but to get some.
No, just to come out with that plan, just so folks, so that citizens and the legislative branch, the City Council, and the Mayor's Administration, and the Comptroller's Office, and everyone's aware that the agency understands what the issues are, and that the agency is taking those recommendations from our auditor very seriously, and has a plan in place to try and address those, so that the next time an audit is conducted, that those won't be an issue again. And I think that now that we're on the cusp of Herculean effort to complete thirteen audits over the next twenty-two, twenty-four some odd months, which I commend Mr. Raymond and his department, and Mr. McCarty's role in that under the Comptroller, for their commitment to, I hope that that's something that my colleagues, and of course, Council President Young and Chairman Stokes, would look at, is trying to get corrective action plans in place in sixty days. And the last part of that question is to Mr. McCarty, again, your extensive experience with the city. Do you know of any guideline or regulation, whether it be, or Madam Comptroller, whether it be in the city charter, or in the code of Baltimore City, that requires a corrective action plan within a specific, specific period of time to an audit that is conducted by the city auditor?
No, there is no such requirement, in the administrative manual, with the charter, or with the city code.
Okay. So I would certainly respectfully suggest to the Chairman and the rest of my colleagues that that is a weakness with the Quadrennial Audits Bill Charter Amendment, and I hope that's something we can continue to discuss in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate your points. Councilman Craft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some questions and then a statement. My question, and I'm not quite sure who it would go to, so I'll just throw the question out there, and then whoever. The off-books money, is that in the audit? And when I say the off-books money, that is like the money that's in the foundations that's counted on to be used by the, by the department. We use like the Volmer Center as an example. The, I think there was a million dollars in the foundation that went to the Volmer Center, and then the city came up with a million dollars for the Volmer Center. Center, and then the city came up with a million dollars for the Volmer Center. When you have other money for other projects that go into those, for lack of a better word, those side accounts, that sort of thing, that don't show up in the city budget when we go through the budget process, um, and we're told during the budget process that they're not in there, they're in another account or whatever. Are they part of the audit? Are they considered when the audit is done?
Are you referring to what's in the Baltimore City Foundation that the city parks use?
Right. When that money is used as part of the operating or capital account of the agency, any agency, is that taken into consideration when the agency is audited?
The Baltimore City Foundation gets a separate audit of itself, dispersing the money, and...
But the money is counted into the, it's used by the agencies, and it supplements the operations of the agencies. So it plays into how the agencies budget their funds? And, and it's gonna lead into something else that I'm gonna get to in a minute. But when you look at what they're doing, are you looking at all the money that's available to them when you're looking at their operation? Or are you just looking at the money that comes in, um, you know, through the, um, through the, that we see in the budget book, the general fund, the special fund, or whatever, that's, um, and not all the money is in those lines that are in the budget book?
Basically, the financial statements are what's on the city's records, city dynamics. We do include in the notes...
I'm in.
Explain the other sources in the notes. Volmer City Foundation. But what, what we have in the financial statements are what's on the city's records.
So that doesn't necessarily reflect what it really is costing to run the agency, what the agency is really spending, or what the agency is really depending upon every year in real life.
And, and we use the budgeted figures, yes. We do, we do explain in the notes that they, that there's other sources of funds that the recreation parks receive.
Okay, but they're not in what you're looking at?
We relied on the audit report of Baltimore City Foundation for that.
I'm not trying to trick you. I'm just trying to like, have a, a clear statement. If the budget book says, the budget book says there is $27 million that is in the city budget for the Department of Recreation and Parks, and in these side accounts, whether it's the golfers or the Baltimore City Foundation or whatever, there's another $2.5 million that is not in that, that budget book, then it's costing 27, 28 plus 2.5 to do what Wreck and Parks is doing for that given year. But your audit is only auditing what's in that book. It is not auditing what is in those other accounts. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So that we really don't know, we're really not getting a true picture when we look at the overall agency of what it's costing to operate the agency, and, you know, what it's costing in every, any given year to do what the agency has done in that particular year, correct? So that's my...
We did include revenues, all the revenues associated with Wreck and Parks in our audit. Is that, is that your question?
So the, so for example, the Volmer money, if we were, if the, the Volmer money were in there in a year, the Volmer money is in that...
Oh, the Baltimore money.
The Volmer, V-O-L-M-E-R, Volmer Center, the donation, that money, which did not come in from the city budget, it came in separately, from the city foundation. That was shown as money that was in the budget for the purpose of the audit?
It was disclosed in the notes, yes. Is that...
We're not sure.
I got my point. I understand what you're...
We're not trying to confuse. The councilman is not trying to confuse.
No, I'm not trying, no, that's fine. My, my next thing is, and maybe this is for Mr. Burkine, um, the, um, the project open space money. Mr. Delport made a, um, a, for lack of a better word, um, a representation, um, that the city did not know, city Wreck and Parks did not know that it could use proper, uh, project open space money for operation and maintenance?
I can't address what took place in the past, but we do make use of open space money for, uh, operations and maintenance, yes.
Okay, you know that.
Yes.
But you don't know whether that was the, the case in the past?
I have no idea.
Okay. Another thing, and, and this is just in terms of, of operations, he mentioned the forestry division, and I don't know whether this is through you, or it's through purchasing, or whatever, but I had a conversation with one of my colleagues today, and it just was, um, I just had this conversation with the constituents about tree planting. And, you know, we purchase trees, and we get a warranty from the people from whom we purchased the trees. And it's, you know, they plant the tree, and they say, you know, we'll guarantee, they're, they plant the tree, they're supposed to water the tree, and if the tree dies within the next number of years, then they give us a new tree. Right? So it's cheaper for them to let the tree die. So they put the tree in, and these are like in the, not just in a park, but in the neighborhood where we're trying to build the tree canopy, they put it in, but then they don't come around on a regular basis to water the tree or care for the tree. The tree dies, they honor their warranty a couple of years from now, they give us another tree, but we end up with some little scrawny ass tree, excuse me, tree, that, you know, where the tree didn't get a chance to really grow because it wasn't nourished and everything else. So they're getting away with this, and all we get back is another tree, and they say, wait a minute, we did what we said we would do. If we didn't water, we didn't do that, tree died, we gave you a new tree. So I don't know, you know, in terms of cost and, and benefit and whatever, it's just something I wanna put on your radar. And then my final thing is a comment, Mr. Chairman, and that is this. I think Mr. Burkine is, I, I don't know how many directors I've been here in 10 years, probably a dozen, maybe more. You know, than here. And I, and I have to say that, um, Mr. Burkine is a superstar. I just, I love him, I love what he's done with the parks, and I'm not saying that because you're here. I say it to people all the time. You know, we have come so far with you in the last, you know, the little bit of time that you have been here, and, and, and I applaud it, and, um, and I wanna give you all the help we can get. I've been here for three mayors, I have some colleagues that have been here for six mayors. And I hear them say over and over, I'm gonna pick up on my colleague from the 13th and the president, I hear them say in, in speech after speech after speech, that the greatest asset of the city of Baltimore is its youth. Their young people, that sort of thing. But we refuse to invest in these children. And particularly when summertime comes, you know, and we wonder why we, you know, we talk about, we need more cops on the street in the summertime. Well, the reason we need more cops in the street in the summertime is was, cause we keep cutting the Wreck and Parks budget. We keep cutting the money to work in the forestry division. We could have kids out there working in these parks, building them, we could have our own civilian conservation corps, we could be treating these kids, giving them nature experiences, and there's all kind of studies now on No Child Left Inside, um, you know, and, and ecotherapy. I mean, they're out there, they're proven, this all works, um, and yet, you know, it's the first thing we wanna do, is take this money away. Um, you know, 35 years ago, I think it was 35 years ago, Mr. Wall told me there were more people working in Patterson Park, doing all the work in Patterson Park than they're now doing in all the city, just in Patterson Park. And that doesn't count all the other bigger parks in the city. You know, that's a crime. It's a crime, and it's a crime against our kids. Not against anybody else, it's a crime against our kids. And we have got to find a mon, way to put that money back where it belongs. And it's not just about edging and all that, because that's important. But, you know, we shouldn't be worried about where $600,000 comes to open up a splash pad. You know, we should be, and we shouldn't be worrying about, you know, three years to get a tree trimmed, or to get a tree stump pulled. I mean, this is, you know, this is, what do they call it? Reductio ad absurdum. I mean, we've gotta fix this, and we've gotta fix it now, because we only get a couple of chances at this. And we got the right guy in the right place, so let's do the right thing for him. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we, I think we can say amen to that. The, the primary purpose of us aggravating and pushing and, and around all of this is to find out where you need the greatest support, and where we can be supportive of it, to know where your matters are of greatest need, and that we can be, uh, as much as possible of, of greatest support. That's what this is about, not to find fraud or waste or abuse, but to find where your support is most needed, so that we can be there for you. That's why we've been calling on these types of matters for so long, and that's why we are appreciative of the agencies who are with us tonight, who have done, uh, the best they can. And the best they can is, is not a bad thing to say. Uh, we really do support you, um, and so we thank you. Are there others tonight who wish to testify? I, I have the sign-in sheet, but I don't see anyone else checked to testify this evening. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? So we appreciate your being here this evening. Uh, we thank you all for your interest, um, in our Wreck and Parks Department and, um, in the matter of, of, yes, sir, Mr. Delport?
Excuse me, I, I just have one thing I wanna bring up in response to, uh, Mr. Young's question previously. And that is, um, this. Think about it this way, when it comes to open space in this city, since the 1850s, until I was director, you had a park board that was in charge of open space, because the parks, parkways, and so forth were synonymous with open space. Now you're getting ready to entertain, transform Baltimore, and you're gonna create a category for open space. But what we don't have is a valve or a gatekeeper responsible for open space, increasing open space, planning for open space, et cetera. I think a park board is something you should seriously reconsider. Thank you.
You got anything? Okay, thank you all. Uh, we're, Councilman? No? Okay, we're now adjourned, and thank you all once again. We appreciate you being with us tonight.